Join me and move to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
So our first item is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on September 12, 2023. Yeah, call the meeting to order. Okay, motion to approve the minutes?
It's unmoved.
Second, motion by trustee Kane, seconded by deputy mayor Haye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That leads us to our treasurer, Tim Bullock, and his report. Tim? He needs to be unmuted.
Good evening, board. For the August 2023 treasure report, the revenues we received were 500,000, overall 6.5 million for the year. The village received the police revenue sharing from Suffolk County in the amount of 210,000 and 20,000 tax relief for the sewer treatment plant in the county. The village received 11,000 in paid parking revenue for September. Since May, we received 101,000 from the Long Wharf paid parking and 4.9,000 from Havens Beach. Our charging station revenue for the fiscal year is 5.3,000. And then the building department for the month of August took in 94,000 while the sewer rates brought in 25,000. For expenditures, we spent 3.4 million through August, which is 18% of our budget, which is on pace with the prior year spending, just over 100,000 from the prior year. The village paid 446,000 for our fire department low SEP retirement program in August. At Chesterfield, we paid 234,000 for the transient dock upgrades. The village also paid the second installment for the building of the village fire boat, 478,000, which is being paid through the budget and donations that we received. Additionally, the voluntary ambulance department purchased new EMS gear for 77,000 and the sewer department had some pump out services for 25,000. And that's my treasure report for August.
Trustees have any questions for the treasurer?
One quick question, the 100,000 difference between this and last year, I presume we're spending 100,000 more this year than we did last year?
Yeah, it's just the overall spending so far through August, basically, just 100,000 more than we spent last fiscal year, August 2022.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Not a problem.
Any other questions? Have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I love it.
Motion by deputy mayor Haye, seconded by trustee Kane. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, that leads us to our department committee reports. I will start out with the police, fire, and ambulance corps reports for September of 2023. The Sag Harbor Village Police Department answered 804 calls for service in the month of September. We had seven aggravated unlicensed operation. We had two suspended registrations, one reckless conduct, and we had 20 motor vehicle accidents. There were 11 arrests, one DWI arrest, and 112 uniform traffic tickets were issued. So the police department has been very busy. That leads us to the fire department. In the month of September of 2023, the fire department volunteered for 1,170 man-hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to 55 calls for service. These calls included one mutual aid for a boat fire, one mutual aid for a structure fire. We had five motor vehicle accidents. We had five gas leaks and two carbon monoxide incidents. In the month of September, the Sag Harbor Fire Department, along with all the departments in the ninth division, took part in the 9/11 memorial service in East Hampton. This is a great way for the fire department members and the community to remember all the lives that were lost on that day. Also this past month, we had three members receive the Medal of Valor from Suffolk County Vocational Board for their heroic efforts at a structure fire. These members were Ryan Miller, Kevin O'Brien-Juna, and John Schroeder II. And that reports from our first assistant chief, Michael Guyer. Moving on to the ambulance corps. The ambulance corps had 81 emergency calls in September, four work nights, two meetings, one training session, and three standbys for a total number of 1,039 man-hours. The Sag Harbor ambulance provided an ambulance for three community events in September. The first was a 5K fundraiser for the park, which you were involved in, am I correct? The next two were at Harbor Fest weekend. We had standby for each day there and we ran shifts and crews and that concludes the report for the ambulance and it concludes my reports. So moving on to deputy mayor Haye with the park, justice court, planning and the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to reemphasize that for events, volunteer events, community events like the 5K, like Harbor Fest, the ambulance department, the fire department, and the police do such a great job of going above and beyond to give their time to provide support to these community events, oftentimes they're fundraisers for local organizations. They do a fantastic job. They do it without complaint. They do it very efficiently and they are incredibly helpful at guiding local volunteers as well. So I just want to keep emphasizing what a great job they do, especially in these times where post-COVID things have opened up again and Sag Harbors seems to become more popular than ever. Which I think is a good thing.
With a smile on.
Really, they do. I'll start with the justice court report and I'm happy to report, since I've always been complaining about the revenues dipping, 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 they moved back up again later in the summer. We are still, you know, not on pace for what we were receiving in revenues through the justice court through the, from the 2017, 18, 19 years. But it's improving potentially over prior, over last year's sum. And this summer's picked up a little bit over prior summers, which is encouraging. Again, a difficult time. We know we were shorthanded on TCOs and police officers through much of the summer. There are a few TCOs who've honestly done outstanding job, who've really carried the weight of many in the past. And so the fact that we haven't slipped further behind on revenue collections through traffic and especially the parking is encouraging. Not that that's what it's all about, but that combined with other work that's been done around the village, sometimes suggestions from the public to improve the flow on Main Street has been encouraging. And it's something that we'll keep working on in the future. The volume of cases has been relatively robust. What we had in, I'm sorry, September was DWEs two, speeding violations 10. We had a total of 90 cases come through the justice court and, I'm sorry, we had a total closed of 90. We have about 91 opened. So typically, that's the way it's working. What I like about what's been happening in the justice court in the last year versus prior years is that we're closing cases as quickly as we're opening them. The backlog isn't building up as it did in years past, which is nice to see that we're more efficiently getting through the cases and they're not hanging out there because with that becomes much uncertainty. I'll speak a little bit about we have resolutions coming later, one on an open space group. We've been meeting, so let me speak about Mash Park first, I guess. Mash Park continues to support the school in its fall sports activities. Mash Park is still waiting to hear from CPF on whether or not, and to what extent CPF will fund capital investments in the park. It's renewed its contract with the school for the next year. And everything is a little bit on hold, waiting to see what happens with CPF. What funding is offered, how much before negotiations with the school continues and before a capital program for the park gets approved by the park board members. In addition to that, though, what we'll see later, I'll save that for later, actually, when we get to the resolution on open spaces. From a planning perspective, again, we have a resolution in this package about a new treasurer being appointed. That's a key part for our financial planning for the village. So we're looking forward to that person coming on board. And I'll keep my comments to that point as well.
Okay, thank you, deputy mayor Haye. Trustee Korsch with the sewer plant. Thank you, mayor. Started the sewer plant, the report for September 2023, total gallons were 2.349 million gallons of inflow, total gallons associated with 53,000. DMR reports were forwarded 9/25. Suffolk County DHS inspection, next inspection will be 10/10/16, so it'll be this week. New York State DC inspection, as always, the date is open. We had no complaints. Wastewater Plant is running well, under all permitted levels, and we're still operating on four of the five basins. We'll be coming down to three, I think, either this week or next week. The flow from August through September was 800, the flow decrease from August to September was 828,000 gallons. As we heard earlier, paid parking, just so far, we have, as Tim said, we've received 101,000 plus from Long Wharf. Parking will continue through Thanksgiving, so even though the volume has fallen off, I think we will probably hit around 115,000 this year compared to last year was 92,000, I think. So I look forward to the discussion of how we're going to, how we're going to apply these funds to to issues in the village related to transportation. And we also have $4,900 from from the project at Havens Beach. Last year at Havens Beach, we couldn't hire a person to collect from people who wanted to pay the daily rate, so we had none of those funds last year. So that's a good thing. So we'll build on that. I hope to report a little more later. As far as grants go, we have our grants at CPF, both in East Hampton and Southampton, are right on the edge of hopefully being approved. I was hoping to be able to report this evening that there had been some progress there. I'm still looking at my text messages, but nothing has gone through, so I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but just as a reminder, under consideration, East Hampton CPF is about $800,000 that would go towards area L. And in Southampton, we have two grant applications under consideration. Phase two sewer engineering, it's 1.498 million dollars and sewer shed K supplemental funds, $896,000. That's under consideration. And we also have, not to forget, our application of into New York State, which in July for sorting in the village, and that's a 5.97 million. We won't hear about that. That's a big ask, so you know, if you can only go to the well, one spring, big bucket, I say. And so we'll see, we'll hopefully hear about that in December, even if it's partially funded. Last time around, we didn't receive any funds at all, so I'm hoping this year we might be more fortunate. I've had no issues with, there are no issues have come to light from the zoning board of appeals. So that would conclude my reports, mayor.
Thank you, trustee Korsch. Trustee Plum with Public Works and the Board of Historic Preservation and Architecture Review.
Let's see, multiple heavy rainstorms in the village were can cause much damage, a couple of trees down. The Round Pond Restoration Project has begun, will be completed in two months. The music festival went on well, no major problems. Hatching of roads, where needed, trimming of trees continues around the village. Street sweepers continue to sweep old roads. Painting of all stop lines continues. Crosswalks have been repainted for school. And we down to one pickup a day for the village garbage cans. And we are, they've started the streetlight, LED streetlight replacement program. It's going to take about six weeks. They've gotten four in so far, and Dee has had four complaints so far about, it's a color of light primarily, but they can be dimmed. So we're just asking, you know, just wait until we get them all in. It's a big problem, it's a big number. And once they're all in, then they can be dimmed, adjusted.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's my report.
Thank you, Bob. That brings us to trustee Kane with the building department, harbors and docks, and the harbor committee.
Okay, great. So for the building department, as of the end of September, we are running 28% above the budget, so that's 119,000 plus above the budget that we have, which is 415,000, just for people to understand what the numbers are. However, that number is below
We have some feedback.
Last year's, there we go.
She's just such a big speaker, just echoes all over the room.
There it is. We're running about 14% below last year's revenue, just comparing year-to-date September this year versus last year. And we really see the impact of, with interest rates being raised and people who have had projects. They, some people are putting things on hold. Permits have been approved, but people aren't actually doing all the work. So this is, we're clearly seeing that impact. And I'm sure we all see things changing as a result of that, but so that's what those numbers are. We're still moving ahead. Things are going well in the building department. And then with regard to the docs report, there we are running to date 18% ahead of last year. So you just see the difference, the popularity of having a boat here as well as the addition of the transit docks. And they were really booked pretty well through the whole summer. Even we were looking at through music festival and then even the film festival, we saw people coming with their boats and using the transit docks, even with the bad weather. You know, when you had the deluge of the rain and things, people were here and they were using it. So it's, again, the popularity of Sag Harbor, as you know, is great and strong. And to continue on trustee Haye's comment, you know, and thanking all the different services that work, you know, the harbor committee or the dock workers, you know, they're there during the music festival, during Harbor Fest. And of course, during the film festival, because there's extra need. So again, we want to just thank everyone doing their job and as we said, with a smile on their face. So things are going well.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Kane. And that concludes our department reports. Can I have a motion to accept the reports?
I'm of it.
Motion by deputy mayor Haye. Can I have a second? Seconded by trustee Korsch. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us to our public comment section. We have 15 minutes open for public comment. I would ask that we limit the speakers to three minutes each. Yes, would you like to come forward in the back? I see you, Nada. Just give me a second.
Hi, Anthony Vermaij, 68 Union Street. I just want a quick thing that I think would fall under Public Works. One of the no parking signs on Union Street has gone missing and it's a pretty critical one right after, as the road starts to get narrow right as you go east of the Dueller's Church. And in the past, I've sort of talked about this board about potentially putting more no parking signs on Union Street, so we're kind of going in the wrong direction. So just asked to think about getting that replaced before next summer, things get
Which side is it?
My side, so the, I guess it's the south side of the street, right after the Presbyterian Church.
I actually
Looks like somebody took out a mailbox, too, so I think somebody probably
Hopefully not your new, hopefully not your new mailbox.
No, no. My new mailbox is specifically designed to be able to be hit by a truck. It was either that or a spike strip, so.
Good choice.
Thank you, Anthony. Nada, did you want to speak?
I emphatically thought I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I thought that the parking on Long Wharf ended earlier than you just stated. Did I hear correctly, through Thanksgiving?
Yeah, we extended, we started earlier, ending later. We extended the season.
I adamantly wish you'd just end it, say, at Columbus Day weekend, because if you're only going to make about 5,000 and the inconvenience of it, the local people who are around at this time trying to shop for us on Main Street, I think that it's too long, frankly.
Well, we can revisit that. That's what we decided for this year.
Yeah, for this year, I'd love you to.
We certainly will. I certainly will.
Thank you.
Taken, our advisement.
I'll get to you, Kate.
Hi, Elizabeth Gilbert, 19 Atlantic Avenue. I would just, I saw we've got a housing initiative up here, affordable housing. I would respectfully ask that we wait until we have a comprehensive plan set down before we go about adopting any new zoning regulations. It seems like you're putting your cards before the horse. Thank you.
Kate.
Let me start. I just wondered whether the Department of Public Works has been moved along at the farmers market. It's so long and it's so wet.
Don't you like it that way?
No.
I'll mention it to you.
Thank you, Kate. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, that ends our public comment section. We now move on to introduction. We have the 2023 Affordable Housing Initiative. Did you want to speak on this?
Sure. This is just a planning analysis done by Nelson Pope and Voorhees. We all know that we've introduced legislation a couple of months ago now, amendments to the ADU legislation from two years ago. We continue to look at affordable housing village-wide. This is a study, as we said we do after this administration took office, to start the planning process for affordable housing. It's recommendations, it's in draft form just for introduction and to give to the public to comment on in the future, not for today, for the board of trustees or the public to comment on, but just to start the conversation about, and this is Nelson Pope and Voorhees assessment based on the historical work that's been done and where we are today, as well as some recommendations. Very much in draft form, very much want to hear public comment. And to the extent that the trustees have additional questions, comments, once they get a chance to review it and study it, Nelson Pope and Voorhees is available to each one of us as well.
It will be tomorrow morning.
This just came in, I think, yesterday.
I printed it this morning, yeah. I haven't read it yet.
And this gave everyone time to read it.
And no, this is not, you know, no proposed amendments or anything like that yet. This is the study that would be the support for whatever we propose to do going forward.
Thank you. Thank you, deputy mayor. That'll bring us to the public hearing section of the meeting.
Sorry, that introduction to the speed limit that I just handed you.
Yeah, that's okay, so we can
I'm going to add it as an intro.
All right, so we're going to introduce a resolution setting a public hearing to consider a local law amending Village Code 265-1, speed limits, to make speed limit for Suffolk Street Extension 25 miles per hour. And as I understand, this is within our jurisdiction to lower to 25, that if we go, we're going to start the process of making it even lower. I think we should explore that, at least to 20 miles an hour. But this would set it within our jurisdiction to 25 miles per hour. As of right now, I saw one sign on Suffolk Street Extension that says 30 miles an hour. So this would lower it to 25 and we would post signs up and down the street.
The public hearing, adopt the local law at the next meeting, then you would change it. The other streets that were listed in that letter were already 25 miles per hour, so we don't need to change those.
Right, what I would
Go to 20, it needs to state.
You need state enabling legislation to authorize you to reduce it.
And I say
25.
Right, as I said before, and I had spoken about this on WLNG, we had a East End Supervisors and Mayor's Meeting and traffic was a big issue. A lot of incidents or situations like this were brought up. And in order to get the state or the county to help us, it's going to take time. These are things that we can enact now or within the next month or two to help, help the situation with the traffic and the speeding. I also asked council to look into a no-through traffic
Yes.
sign in certain areas to try to keep the traffic on the main roads instead of them cutting through residential areas such as Hempstead Street, down Bay Street. Keep them on 114 or on the major thoroughfares. So this is one step that we're we're going to introduce tonight. So I need a motion to introduce the law for
So moved.
So moved.
Second, motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Korsch. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I just ask one more question for clarification? I think I've heard this now, but the basis for our ability to set the speed limit of 25 miles throughout, is it throughout the village? Is it in certain parts of the village?
It's throughout the village. It's pursuant to New York City Vehicle and Traffic Law. I think it's Section 1640. It's actually in the law.
For some reason, Suffolk Street Extension, as I
1640 and 1643.
Was, for some reason, Suffolk Street Extension was not on the list of roads for some reason. So we're just correcting that.
How many 30 mile an hour streets are left in the village?
The only one that I know of would be, it's a state road, which is 114.
Right. Wouldn't it be foolish to have one speed limit in the village?
It's 25, yeah.
20 village-wide. Except
It's just that list that was given the other day in the previous law. Those are all 25. Everything not listed is 30.
Each street is listed.
Is listed in the code.
But that's for 25 miles an hour.
Yeah.
What I would like to know, and I would like to have a review of this, is when the process was started for 20 miles an hour and how that began, and why were these other streets not included? It should have been everything in the village, not just certain streets. And if there was a reason why only certain streets were included in the 20 mile per hour zone?
Well, the ones near the schools are specifically authorized by state law to be 20, but I can look at the others.
Is that only when the lights are flashing, when school is on, or is that?
I'd have to check.
Yeah, the other, the other thing is that in the historic district, it's 20 throughout the village.
I think that's part.
Yes, but then again, on Hempstead Street, there's a sign that says historic district, 25 miles an hour. I'm a little confused here.
So we need to, we need to bring consistency.
It needs to be consistent. I would like to see all the roads 20 miles an hour in the residential area. And that's what we're going to work towards.
I agree. I think that would be great.
But this is closing a loophole here.
So we have a public hearing on this in November 14.
Okay, so the, the public hearing is in November.
So let's just, to go back to, you said that there's a, there's a list in the code of all the streets.
Yes.
Is that for every single street in the village?
Yes.
And it calls it out for what speed limit is there?
Okay. Okay, so now we'll move on to public hearing. It's a resolution to adopt local law to amend Village Code 300-9.12 accessory apartments in the R20 zoning district and 300-9.1, Section B, 5, placement of accessory buildings structures and uses to reduce the size of accessory structure to clarify code provisions. Did you want to speak on this, Ed, or about?
Not specifically, but
Do you want to counsel?
This is opening a public hearing on this proposed legislation. And it reduces the size of proposed accessory apartments from 500 to 280 square feet. So that's the minimum GFA, and then the maximum gross floor area is 600 square feet. It just clarifies that. And it makes it consistent with another section of the code, which also referenced it referenced gross floor areas for accessory buildings. So we wanted to make sure it was consistent and clarified throughout. This, these local laws that are on tonight were all, for zoning purposes, were referred pursuant to general municipal law, Section 239, to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. So they are just opening for a public hearing. We cannot adopt them until we get that referral back from Suffolk County Planning Commission, which we have not received.
Okay, so
All three of these.
Yes.
So this gives us flexibility with the size of our accessory dwelling units to make it to make it, give us more opportunity to create affordable housing.
How does this play in with the affordable housing units?
This is, this is the legislation that was passed last year. We're, we're reducing the minimum size, square footage, so.
New York State changed it, because I think New York State used to be 400 square feet and they, New York State reduced it, I think, down to 200.
I know New York State is 400.
So does New York State have a minimum size accessory? I thought they did.
It was 400.
I, I believe that should be the case anyhow.
280 is a two-car, square foot, two-car garage picture.
Right.
Right. That's the logic of how we came up with the 280 and, and also just taking into consideration so many of the plots here in Sag Harbor are small. And so if you had a 400 or a 500 square foot minimum, that would make it almost impossible in some of the properties to do this. So looking at New York State law, making sure we were conforming to all that, this would be the smallest. And then also, as trustee Plum mentioned, looking to a typical size of a two-car garage, this would be something that would be typically the size. And so it would be easy for someone to convert what they already have. So we were trying to locate it from all different points of view. And then obviously, they would still have to conform to all state codes, fire prevention, safety, et cetera. But that's how we. And health departments.
That's, that's the big one. The health department, that's where most people are going to find, they, they're going to have to, to conform to the Suffolk County Health Department regulations. It's going to involve septic and, that's where the costs are going to come in.
Will it trigger an IA system upgrade for the entire property?
Most likely, given the existing septic that are available today, if they're going to convert, they will most likely need to go to the IA. But I, I can't say 100%, you know, we need to.
By the way, what would be.
Remind people that there's a new AI system that can go in under a driveway.
Yes.
By the way, you also want to thank Val Florio, who did a great rendering. I think it made it into the local paper last week. And so Kate, in addition to uploading the legislation, it might be helpful to upload that, because some, I mean, pictures really aren't worth a thousand words. And so he gives a representation of what it looks like as a separate ADU and as an attached ADU, depending on the place.
Does anybody wish to comment publicly on this? What's that?
We have to open the public hearing.
Well, we already did that. Motion, I thought we did that already. Motion to open the hearing?
I'll move it.
I thought we did that already.
Second.
To be sure.
Aye. Opposed, hearing is open. We're talking about it and it's not open? All right. Do we have any public, yes, Anthony? You state your name again, so people that maybe just jumped on Zoom or don't know who you are.
Anthony Burman, 68th and Main Street. Yes, 100% in favor of this. This is great. You know, in Sag Harbor, there's this whole kind of class of existing buildings, these unused or underused garages that are usually typically between 200 and 400 square feet. And that makes them too big to be converted into pool houses and too small, but they're still too, too small to qualify for the accessory apartment sizes. So that really opens up a whole class of buildings that could potentially be converted into these ADUs. And I always get clients asking what they can do with these buildings. And I have to kind of just stroke my hands and say, not really much, because they're too big, once again, too big to become pool houses if they do have room to do with a swimming pool and too small to be turned into accessory apartments. So I think this really goes really far, really helps address that issue. So yes, please put this into effect as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
If someone was to build one of these, they weren't converting an existing garage, would they be subject to lot coverage or is there?
So if, if it's a building that's pre-existing, non-conforming, that's fine.
Sure.
If they're going to be building a new one, then it's 70% of the width, but the setbacks would have to be honored as they are currently.
The pyramid law would have to be honored.
Period. And, you know, whether it's front yard, side, those setbacks would still, but 70% of the width, because, and we, we looked at that because so many of them, it is the more narrow width.
And then for total lot coverage, is that part of the calculation that would need to, if you're over the lot coverage, you still have to go get a.
A variance. Yes. So, but that's why it will be so helpful, to Anthony's point, for the pre-existing buildings that they could be taking advantage of this.
Absolutely. It's a great idea.
And I would just add to this whole discussion of affordable housing. Our village is 2.2 square miles. So we're doing, I mean, with the help of the public, we're doing, trying to do as much as we can to incentivize or to get people to, to use these structures and to possibly convert them. So just another step in the process. Do we have any other comments from the public?
This section doesn't refer necessarily to affordable housing.
No.
Technically, right?
But it is, it is, it is in affordable housing, yeah.
It's not a prerequisite for the sizes. In other words, you don't have to be.
This is the affordable housing legislation we passed last year about ADUs. It's now, it doesn't, it doesn't have, I think the way it was printed, it doesn't include.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't include.
Just says.
It just starts with D, because for its purposes of sending things to general code, we want to limit it to what we're changing. So the other sections of the code are not referenced here.
Which is a fair question.
Yeah, but they still apply.
But they still, they're in the code. It's just we're not amending those.
Right. Any other public comment? Yes, on this particular.
And please, so to encourage you and everybody else, go back and read this in the context of the full code. Yeah.
Hi, Stephen, 68th and Main Road. Second, I just have a question about the health department aspect of this, because that has always been the biggest drawback to. And I'm just curious to know how, how you're overcoming that.
That's not something we can, we're not.
Well, but one, one way, one way can be, you know, putting an IA system might help with the health department, might get us there. We can't, we don't have the power to overcome that.
I mean, you have the I, probably for any type of construction like this, you'd require the IA system, but it's the, the flow, the gallons per.
It's the number of bedrooms. The health department bases the size of the septic system on. So if you're adding a bedroom.
Most likely will trigger.
Most likely, you'll have to upsize your system, and if it's old system, you'll have to improve it.
So they're not considering it to be an additional residence?
A bedroom.
It.
Does it need its own system? Do you need two systems?
It can depend on how, which, how the ADUs construct it, right? If it's attached to the existing structure, they don't necessarily consider it a separate residence. If you had a separate building, they may for IA system purposes?
They may, but, I mean, it, it, I guess, I guess it would be if the current septic system had room on it. So let's say you had a two-bedroom house and you were going to convert part of it in, you know, whether it's converting a garage or converting a part of your house to be an accessory apartment. So the attached versus the detached. And, and, and the current septic system could cover four bedrooms. They potentially could approve that. We can't say that. But it would very much depend on what, if it's cinder block, no cinder block ones will be approved for anything.
Part of what we want to do is start the process and then see what happens with the county to some extent, too.
I mean, I understand that you're, you know, that you'd like to introduce the code changes and the change in the legislation. But having been down the garden path and through the alley on this, with one of my own projects, I firmly believe that the way that the Suffolk County Department of Health Services Waste Water Management currently has it is that they measure the gallons based on the size of the lot per residence. Okay? And it's, most of the lots within Sag Harbor Village, of course, were unconform to that because they're too small. So there'll be pre-existing non-conform. However, if you are going to introduce another residence on that piece of property, there's no way that that property, unless it's several acres, because you need a half an acre for residences, is the quote code for Suffolk County Department of Health. So you have all of this wonderful legislation that's going to allow you to build these apartments, these accessory apartments, and they're not kind of going to be connected to sewers. And the Suffolk County Department of Health considers them to be separate residences. It's, you need a paddle.
I would say speak to your county representatives, and there's a lot of stuff going on in the county now.
That's the thing, Mayor, they, they rip, the part of the increase in the, in the 2%.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Uh, what do they call that? It escapes me.
TPI funds.
Yes.
Yeah.
As part of that, they were going to increase that. And it was my understanding that Fred Thiel was going to have that introduced, that that was going to be able to, to up, to be, that percentage of the increase was supposed to be able to be used to upgrade infrastructure for affordable housing, which would include sewer connections. So I don't know where that is. I don't, you know, what I'm saying. Well, I'm saying is that I, I hear this very good legislation and everyone's working very hard on it, but.
We can only do, we can only, this is our, our purview is, is the village.
Maybe this will be the impetus for the county to start looking at this, because this problem is not unique to Sag Harbor.
No, the whole statewide.
Statewide.
But that's always been the, you know.
But I think thinking has to change. I think if we do our part, maybe we can.
If we can put what we can in place, and then we can also encourage and have conversations with county representatives and state representatives as well, and we'll do that as well. If, if they be, if they are the impediment, we will have those conversations as well.
Trust me, they indeed are.
And Aiden's going to get us the grant money so that we can increase the sewer.
Yes.
With the, you know, the community preservation increase, that would be great. It's doing the whole village.
I wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, that moves us to public comments for a resolution to adopt local law, to amend local law amending Village Code 300 Attachment 1, Use Tables to Add a Public Parking Lot Use.
Do we have to vote to continue it to November 14th? Continue this public hearing?
I mean, I'm waiting to hear if anybody has any. Yeah.
But the last one we just did.
The last one.
Do we do them all at the end? Is that okay?
Oh, you should, you, you can just keep the hearing open and adjourn it to the next meeting. That's fine.
Okay. So we'll keep the, the previous resolution will remain open. Yep, until next month.
On the November meeting.
Yep. So again, back to the resolution to adopt local law, to amend local law amending Village Code 300 Attachment 1, Use Tables to Add a Public Parking Lot Use. Would you want to speak on this, counsel, at all, or?
This is on for a public hearing, and it's to add a public parking lot use to the code, which would be permitted in the VB, OD, and RM districts. And it's defined as a principal use of property as a parking lot or parking area where the entire lot remains open to the public at all, at all times and free of charge. And it would be added to the code as a use that would be permitted in the code. This is another, one of the code provisions that was referred to Suffolk County, and I did not prepare any resolution of adoption because we did not hear back with regard to the planning commission.
Is the free of charge aspect of that, is that, that's something that we can insist on by allowing a business or allowing activity?
This is just the definition of the actual use. It's something that, you know, it's up to the board's consideration if you don't want to add that in.
Talk about taking that out, the free of charge.
I mean, there was some discussion about it.
Is it enforceable by the village?
Because, yeah, it's, it's actually, you don't, we're not requiring anyone to, to do this. If, it's if someone wants to opt in and actually do it, right?
It's part of the package.
It's, it's, seems like that would be the actual definition. So it's up to the board. You know, this is allowing a particular use of property that's not permitted right now as a principal use of property in our code. And this would be opening it up to that. No one has to partake in this. No one has to apply for it if they don't want to. It's, it's actually.
So it's permissive and to the extent it's permitted and elected, then it's enforceable if they've elected it.
Right, if they want to.
Any, any comments from the public? Okay, so we're going to have to adjourn this till next month. Keep it open. That'll bring us to resolution to adopt local law to create Village Code, Chapter 253, Tree Preservation. And this has already been opened.
And we've had additional, an additional meeting in the past week with representatives of this, who've been proposing tree legislation for the village for, for a number of years. And we've made a few additional edits to the last version that was before us. Not significant, not significant substantive edits.
No.
Yeah.
I, I, I wish I highlighted them. I apologize to the board, but they were just, they were minor edits. And I think that, that they're going to, some of those people who are at the meeting are probably going to speak tonight, but I'm not sure. So.
Okay, any public comments on this resolution?
Yes, we do.
Eileen?
I'm going to give you a copy of our statement. This is from Jane.
Eileen, could you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, Eileen Murrow, 10th and 12th.
Thank you.
Dear Mayor Bartella, Deputy Mayor Kay, and President of the Board. It's been our endeavor to reflect the wishes of many residents and encourage Sag Harbor Village Government to protect the valuable resource that is our trees. Significant carbon sequestration, especially by our day of growth, prevention of flooding and runoff from storms, privacy, minimization of noise and air pollution, support of wildlife, and preservation of the beautiful physical character of our village are among the many benefits we receive from our trees. To that end, we have worked with four administrations, as you all know, and are very gratified that the current administration has demonstrated their considerable commitment to passing tree legislation this year. Progress has been made in drafting a law that, based on the countless times that distressed and concerned residents have reached out to us, has been the hope of many residents of Sag Harbor community. We agree with the village on most provisions in the current draft of the legislation. I might even, who didn't see both, very, very current. However, there remains the same difference on how to most effectively protect our tree population. The difference that will create dramatically different outcomes to Sag Harbor's tree population over time. While the village proposes an 18-inch DBH, those who like that, to clarify that, that's diameter of a tree at rest height, for a tree removal permit, a 12-inch DBH appears to be the most common and best way to preserve current and future Sag Harbor's trees and tree canopies. I want to show you a photo that demonstrates just how very large the 12.7-inch DBH is. It took roughly, really probably more than 40 years to reach the size, and it can take 50 or 60 years for a tree to reach an 18-inch DBH, depending on the species. This is, to me, in front of a, this is only a 12.7-inch tree. I happen to have an arborist visit today for other reasons, and he was pretty amazed by me. 12.7, yeah, that's a 12.7 inch. We are supported in this position by several ISA-certified arborists, including Jackson Dobbs, Dana Tripp, and Gregory Gutter, as well as Silas Martyr, who with his family owns and operates Martyr's Nursery. They all urge the village to support a 12-inch DBH threshold for a tree removal permit to generally use threshold in village codes. In fact, it's really not unusual for villages to acquire an 8 to 12-inch removal, DBH for removal. All trees are not equal, and smaller placement trees are not equivalent to replacements of trees over 12-inch DBH. Acquiring a permit at the 18-inch DBH level gives a green light for moving a very significant percentage of trees now village. Acquiring a permit at the eighteen inch DBH level gives a green light for moving a very significant percentage of trees now village to that oversight. This current draft directly requires some replanting, but it will take generations to achieve the benefits of mature trees. Deputy Mayor Hay recently requested photos at our last meeting that he referenced, where many trees were moved. And these are photos of properties before and after tree removal and with subsequent, subsequent replanting. And we believe that they illustrate how often, when given the opportunity, all trees on properties are built and usually replaced with lawns and hedges, not new trees. So if I may. This is kind of what started it all. This was three acres, like a slame that became five homes. And it was a three acre pine forest with lots of hysteria. There isn't order to this. This is what happened when they fell the trees. And that's only one piece of property, but there were three acres of this. So this is what we came out to. So it's sort of, it's a storyboard, what was, what we then saw. And although this isn't, if I had known years ago to take better pictures, I would have. This is basically what exists today. This is just a sample of one of the houses. I didn't get all of them, but all of the houses are grass and hedges, not, not, no tree replacements. So this is the gap.
Yeah, we've seen those.
This is a property that happens to be across the street from us. And this is what we looked at for thirty years. Heavily wooded. This is a double lot, both back and front. The option to leave trees apparently was never really considered. Not one tree remained. So that's what we looked at for a number of years. And eventually they planted what we would expect, a lawn, a bush, and some arbividing. That's it. So I think, uh, for us, it demonstrates, while it's true, many people may not cut down trees, but given the opportunity, developers in particular often do. So, um, before a decision is made about this particular issue, we encourage Mayor and Board of Trustees to visit the wooded property located at the corner of Robeson and Harrison, Robeson Boulevard and Harrison Street. Take measure and a hand to assess the potential impact of an eighteen inch DBH permit would have on our tree population. By seeing firsthand the majority of trees that could be removed, an onsite visit will powerfully convey the necessity of using the standard twelve inch DBH in this legislation. We sincerely thank you for your time, in particular, Deputy Mayor Hay, who, and actually, last meeting, trustee Corsh. And we look forward finally to seeing this legislation become part of the Village Code soon.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Eileen and Jane for being so persistent in their pursuit of legislation. On behalf of.
Eight years, thank you.
As well as the trustees and Liz. And others, including Chris Talbert, Ed Hollander, for weighing in on the process every step of the way as well for us, helping to advise us. I think Anthony wants to speak.
Yeah.
So anyone want to frame this particular one?
Where is that tree that you're standing in front of?
Right on my property.
It is.
And it is more than, well, we were just years ago.
Yeah.
And it was large then. Um, and this would come down.
Are you saying that's a twelve point eight inch DBH, you said?
Please don't cut it down, Eileen.
No.
Actually, the arborist who came today sees me and said, I can cut this one and I can cut that one. Thank you.
Good evening again. Anthony Vermodog, sixty eighteen street. So I just want to make a few, um, suggestions here specifically to the two fifty three dash three, the unregulated activities and permit not required. Um, I think the first one is a no-brainer. The second one is a little bit trickier. The no-brainer is, I don't think you should need to get a permit to remove, uh, any tree if it's required by the Suffolk County Health Department to install an IA septic system. And I understand that the, the, the code as it's written doesn't prohibit that, but my understanding is that you would still need to go through that permitting process. I don't think that that's fair because I don't think, you know, to have to hire an arborist, hire, get a, pay the permit fee, go to ARB to, to get permission to some, to remove something that the Suffolk County Health Department has already told you you have to do. Um, so I, I think that that's a no-brainer to just add that to two fifty three dash three. The, the second thing, as, as I said, a little bit trickier, and I think this has to do with, um, large trees that are close to existing structures. You know, there's a lot more, and this is a good thing. There's a lot more mature trees in Sag Harbor now and really Eastern Long Island generally than there were fifty, a hundred years ago. It's a problem, though, when these big trees are getting close to existing houses. And it's been a while since we've had a major wind event out here. Sandy was mostly a flooding event. We haven't seen anything, you know, since, you know, there are a lot more mature trees than there were when Gloria came through or Donna came through, or certainly since Thirty-Eight came through. And when one of these, these storms comes through, which eventually it will, there's gonna be a lot of damage to, to existing structures here in the village. I don't, I think that if there could be some sort of language in this code that, a, a tree that is, say, within ten feet of an existing structure, or maybe fifteen feet within a contributing structure in this district, you don't have to, uh, go through the permitting process, or at least the, the permit fees are, were waived or something like that. Because I don't think we should be discouraging people to sort of proactively take out, uh, trees that are very close to existing structures that could potentially come down on top of those structures, during a, a major wind event. And remember, trees are renewable resources, storeable houses are not. Once they're gone, they're gone. Um, and just one, one more thing I just want to add about this sort of DBH controversy. One, one thing that I suggest as a possible compromise here is a lower limit for non-native trees and a higher limit, uh, the twelve inch limit for, for native trees or historically significant trees. Um, I think that might be a good way of, of mediating between that twelve and eighteen inch, uh, rule. Thanks.
I thought you just said you wanted to simplify the process.
Well, you know, I mean, North Haven's, North Haven's code, uh, is, is structured like that. I think there's some trees, certain species of trees that are under twelve inches and, and some are eighteen inches. So I, I think I don't think that's too, too much of a.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. I will say that, you know, what part of our concerns, please come up, is that, you know, this will be administered by the village, by the building department, and it's already an overburdened department, honestly. And that's not a reason for going one way or the other, but it is a reason to keep this as easily enforceable as possible.
Mary Ann, ninety-six Hampton Street. I just want to add a comment to Anthony's comments about the necessity to take down a tree in order to put it in an IA system. I think a lot of times IA systems are designed, a lot of times, maybe sometimes, um, and it's the first easy answer. And I would say, let's keep it there, um, the regulation applying to septic systems just to put that pressure on those, those engineers to see if there's not another way that they could put that IA system in that backyard, right? Sometimes it's the easiest answer and, yeah, the tree's gone. But you know, you wiggle around, you do it this way, you come in on the other side of the house and you get both. You get the tree and you have the IA system. So, um, I think it's, it's worth keeping it there just to make people think a little bit more clearly and at length about how to save our trees. Thank you.
Somebody's been waiting on Zoom? Okay. She's muted.
Hi, I think you can hear me now.
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, thank you for this opportunity and I just briefly wanted to support the change that Eileen and Jane have suggested to, uh, reduce to, um, increase to eighteen, um, diameter, eighteen inch diameter. And, um, I have nothing additional to add to what they have stated. I think they've worked at this long and hard and become experts on the issue and have done a lot of homework and brought in experts to, to evaluate the, um, justify, uh, honestly, their positions. Um, and I agree with the woman who just spoke, uh, sorry, I don't remember your name, but uh, that we do be careful about in, you know, keeping, uh, when you're going to introduce an AI system, that they should permit if they're going to remove a tree, because maybe they can't find another way that, uh, without any problem, so that we can save the tree and, you know, also get the AI system that, that we all want. I, I guess that's it. It just seems to me also what has been described, if we leave it at the eighteen, it almost makes the legislation moot. All this work has been done, but we wouldn't be really be saving any trees. That's what it sounds like to me from everything that's been, the testimonies that have been given. Thank you for your time and work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just have to say, I disagree with that last comment completely. Um, it is not moot to go with eighteen versus twelve or fifteen. It doesn't, it doesn't eviscerate the legislation at all, in my opinion. There are many opinions on this and we've been advised by arborists as well throughout the process. And we are, we have have taken their advice to this point of eighteen inches for a variety of reasons. Like the other legislation before us, we can authorize this now if we wanted to. So we'll be open again for another month for reconsideration.
We have somebody else on Zoom? What's that?
I know that also the arborists talk, they're trees and they're trees. Some they can, large trees they consider to be invasive and smaller ones that they consider to be better. So.
Well, that gets, that gets Anthony's point of the two-tier, like Kevin.
You have a, so many, look at the trees that are on this relative size, absolute size is not the only measure of a valuable tree.
Absolutely.
I got, I could tell you this story. My, my neighbor who's doing some work, I'm not gonna mention any names.
We know where you live.
I pulled up, I came home, I had my two daughters with me. One is, at the time was eighteen, my other daughter was twenty. We pulled up in front of my house and they had taken down a bunch of trees in the front of the person's property. And my daughter was actually in tears. Was crying because the trees had been taken down. And I tried to explain to her the type of tree that it was, that it's an invasive species. But this is a very emotional issue. It, it's something that I think we should get it right. And I think that we're putting a lot of work into it and, uh, hopefully we'll get it approved soon. So Douglas Newby is ready to speak.
Yeah, okay, hopefully you can hear me now. So Douglas Newby, two forty-four Madison. Um, it does seem to me that, uh, the eighteen inch diameter seems, um, really quite large. I think the photographs that, uh, Eileen showed, uh, reemphasizes that, um, you know, a possible uh, solution would be the, um, the way that North Haven approached it to have different, uh, standards for different types of trees, although that does seem extremely complicated, but, uh, you know, um, to, to view twelve inch diameter trees as being small and, um, immature and anything over that is being ready to be cut down seems, uh, um, a pretty, um, difficult position to, uh, to justify and, you know, I think one of the dangers once the standard is established is that, uh, um, then people feel that they can uh, cut down any, you know, if it's an eighteen inch standard, then any tree, um, uh, less than eighteen inches is fair game. Um, so it would seem to me that there's actually a, almost a danger of um, establishing, uh, the sense that you can cut down, um, anything under eighteen inches. So I would strongly urge, uh, looking at, uh, twelve inches or even, even less as the, uh, the standard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jane, do you want to speak?
Thank you all for your consideration and your time. I know you really care about this issue and so we're pleased to be here, but we help this home stretch. I just want to underscore the difference between a twelve inch, um, diameter and an eighteen inch diameter. It's huge. It's not a little thing. You're talking about decades of growth. And one of the things that we've learned through this process is the importance of canopies and how it work for carbon sequestration, for air pollution, for runoff control, for species habitat. So the, the bigger canopy trees are when you start getting to a twenty-five or thirty-year-old tree. And you can't, we have in this law a good plan to require replanting. But replanting, as Silas Martyr probably knows, you can't plant a big tree because it's very hard for them to thrive and live and get established. So you wind up replanting trees, ain't you like that? It's gonna take one to three generations for these trees to really have any input in our impact in terms of canopy, shade, all of the benefits of having trees. So I, you know, I would encourage you, if you are going back and forth as a board between the twelve inches and the eighteen inches to perhaps do an eighteen-month trial with twelve inches and see how it works with the village. You know, as Liz said in one of our recent meetings, codes get changed all the time. Try the twelve, go with it for eighteen months. Give Chris time to work through these permitting processes. Problem solve some of the things that are gonna come up and go from there. So I mean, that's, that's my suggestion. I think it's a time and a moment. There's good intention here. And to do kind of a, a halfway job, um, I think would be unfortunate. So, thank you.
Thanks very much.
You have somebody on Zoom?
Hi, thank you. Silas Martyr, one seventy-five Main Street. I wanted to read a letter into record. Dear Mayor Gardella and Village Trustees, this letter is in regard to the tree legislation on tonight's Village Board of Trustees agenda. My name is Silas Martyr. I live on Main Street Sag Harbor with my family. I'm a professional landscaper. My family has owned and operated Martyr's Landscaping and Nursery for almost fifty years. I ask that Sag Harbor introduce tree preservation law just as municipalities across Long Island, New York State, and America have already done. Tree preservation is fundamental to public health, welfare, quality of life, and property value. It is required for mitigating the harmful, harmful effects of climate crisis. Trees protect the soil from erosion. They provide habitats on which wildlife depends, including beneficial insects, migratory birds, endangered, endangered species monitored by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Typically, tree preservation code requires that a permit is obtained prior to the removal of a tree with a DBH somewhere between eight to twelve inches. Your proposed legislation sets a DBH of eighteen inches. This means that only those trees with a DPH of eighteen inches or larger would require a removal permit. I measured trees, uh, in my yard, um, established specimens that, uh, that I've cultivated for years. Uh, they don't meet the eighteen inch threshold. The eighteen inch limit is unlikely to help you achieve the aim of the proposed law. It will not protect many of the older trees. It will not protect many of the older trees that populate Sag Harbor. It might confuse members of the public who might think that local trees are protected from clear cutting, and in fact, it might lead to increased clearing of anything that meets the eighteen inch size or less. I confirmed my understanding of the number with my father, Charles Martyr, with Gregory Gutter, our head ISA certified arborist, and with other tree care specialists. I support the immediate passage of meaningful, effective, clearly worded tree preservation law. However, I encourage you to check with the village landscape advisor to request written verification of the eighteen inch mark before you commit to the formula to law. For the benefit of the public and as a courtesy to Ms. Rosenberg and Ms. Young, sincerely, Silas Martyr.
I have a question for for you, Silas. Do you have a, as far as the twelve inch rule, we had Anthony and I I'm sympathetic to his thoughts on the, I'm not going to say invasive and non-invasive. I'm going to say native and non-native trees. Do you think that there should be a distinction on the twelve, twelve inch diameter on native and non-native species or do you think it could apply across the board?
Yeah, or invasive species could come into the conversation. Um, I'm not opposed to it, but I do recognize the the importance of keeping it as simple as possible for the effectiveness and the follow-through on this. Um, so I I do, um, for that reason, I could understand not doing something like that.
To just make it twelve inches standard?
Yes.
As far as diameter? Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Silas. Thank you.
Silas, one question I have, is there a definitive list that's agreed upon by all arborists as to what is native and non-native or is there some ambiguity in there somewhere?
There's a recognized, there's, there's a recognized list. Um, there are controversial sort of points of view that that come into play and alternative um, points of view.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kate?
Um, I, I hear some resistance to twelve inches. And I have the only argument unheard to keep the eighteen was because it was easier for the village. And to me, when you're talking about taking down a forty, fifty-year-old tree because it's easier for the village, is not in this day and age a viable option. And I do think it's going to take moral courage on the part of this very excellent board that is assembled here, the way you talk things over, it's really wonderful to be at these meetings, but I think it's really going to take a, a, a swallow of moral courage to stand up for these older trees and to keep the, the, you know, the legislation at twelve inches. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that. Yeah, if I could just play devil's app, I don't want to say devil's advocate, but if I can play advocate to the twelve inch standard, which is what we're saying, or I believe what we're saying is before you, we're not saying you can't take the tree down. We're saying that before you take that tree down, you need to show a reason why or just cause as to why that tree needs to be removed. So if it's part of an AIA system, it needs to be removed.
If it's damaged, if it's diseased, if it's, you know, if it's fallen on a house, I mean, there's, you know.
I'm just curious as to why we went from, why did we go up to the eighteen inches? What was the driving factor? So there, there are a few, there are a few things that are going on here. First of all, ease is not the only reason. I just want to be very clear about that. There, there are other issues. For example, property owners have rights. Um, and how far does a village want to go in restricting property owners' rights to manage their own property? That's an important consideration as well. Um, another is that we spoke to multiple landscape architects and um, arborists as well, and they advised us on the size of DBH that we should consider for legislation. I'm actually encouraged that having gone through these rounds of draft legislation that the sticking point between us and honestly Jane and Eileen at the end of those meetings was mostly the DBH of those. And there's a lot of work that's been done to get to this point. Um, but there are multiple factors that we consider when we make a recommendation as a certain size versus another. I do not agree with the idea that by setting it at eighteen inches, people are going to go around and cut every tree down that's below eighteen inches in the village. I think that's not accurate. That's not realistic. But I do think people have a right to manage their own property. And I think we have an obligation to protect people's rights of their own property as well.
I'd just like to um, add a, add a little counterpoint to that. This village does have a lot of restrictions. You can't put solar panels up. You can't have a certain door color, your, the windows have to be a certain way, the shutters have to be a certain way. And that's, these are good things. And our village has adapted, people have continued to buy into our village, knowing that there would be restrictions because it's a historic village. So I would say this is on a continuum and it's part of that continuum.
I don't disagree with you at all. Um, but I think that continuum includes things like what Anthony raised. If I've got a thirty-inch, twenty-inch, ten-inch diameter tree right next to my house, that I think is a risk and that has grown up there, I want to have, and I've had historically the opportunity to cut it down, and I've done that with my house frankly, um, before.
But you know, there's always the reasonable man approach and people come go out and visit a site and you say, no, there's a real danger here as, as Jean said, if it's damaged, if it's diseased, if it's going to put anybody in danger, people are proud to be tree notes.
Perfectly, agreed. Agreed.
Um, Helen Russo, eleven Denison Road. Um, I just want to say that a lot of towns and villages now are actually paying to put trees in because remember, we all have to with that, you have to think differently. Do you remember when the discovery of germs, you know, before that no one washed their hands, you, you, you put all the sewer into your drinking water? And then what happened was the science shaped policy, the science shake, you know, how we run our, you know, our cities and towns and stuff like this. And what I'm saying now is we're faced with overheating, we're faced with flooding and we're faced with, you know, erosion and, and the heat. And we really have to think about the value um of services from trees and they do help with drainage, you know, and they do help with uh cooling places down. I mean, towns that they're, you know, are putting trees on along roads because, you know, people die from the heat. And I, I just want to say, you know, that we really have to adapt, we really have to think differently now. Uh, because uh what's happening now um was predicted to happen in fifty years, but it's actually happening now, fifty years, seventy-five years. And um, so we, we just have to think about that.
Yeah. Also, the uh, the price of taking a tree down is one thousand dollars.
Except by the state.
Says in this law. But um, anyway, that's, I think a lot of this is an knee-jerk reaction to lots of over-cleared primarily by developers. And I don't think it was made clear to them, well, the pun intended. You can only do this much.
Right.
I don't think it was pointed out. I don't think they knew it in a lot of cases. By the way, when you talk about AI systems, AI systems are not that much larger than conventional septic systems. Because you have an eight-inch, a eight-foot long septic tank and then an eight-foot ring, the old ones. These are not that different. So it's not like it's this new thing.
So if you, so if you're replacing one that was there and you're upgrading to an IA system?
Chances are, there's no
Right.
A lot of times like the, the old ones will be in the back where they don't want them anyway, you know, you have to move them to the front and that kind of thing.
Right.
It's that, and it's the AI system in itself.
I
Is not like a major contributor to this, I don't think. Anyway.
Did, was there somebody on Zoom that wanted to speak? I just want to get to somebody else, Eileen, if they haven't spoken yet. Stick your hand out. You wanted to add something, Eileen?
I did. I can readdress something that the deputy mayor said and what Jane pointed out. Um, yes, we do have a tremendous amount of restrictions in the village. People come anyway. And those restrictions are, restrictions are primarily, and you'll notice from the ARD, primarily about the physical part of your home, uh, which is important. It's historic and it also contributes to the character. Um, what we're suggesting is that your property, uh, you're getting to his point, your property is part of that, but it has the added advantage of being environmentally valuable to have a code. Beyond that, um, it's not just the homeowner's property, but how about your neighbor's property? Allah, what mayor said about coming home and seeing trees. I mean, look what happened with us. We looked at woods and now we don't. So it's not just about the homeowner, his or herself, but it's also about the surrounding neighbors. They are entitled to a certain environment that they came here for. And that environment is becoming minimal in terms of what it used to be.
But I would, I would ask the public, is there anything else about this resolution besides the diameter that we're using? Is there any other parts of it that they want to talk about or other than?
I want, we haven't gotten the latest version, so
We have, yeah, we're just asking every, anybody in general.
Helen Russo, eleven Denison Road. I know that certain trees as well um have more um that can um sort of provide habitat for more species. For instance, um, an oak tree, there is that, that, um, you know, all the different, because remember, we're having, uh, we're losing birds, we've dropped seventy-five percent birds and insects. Uh, so just
Thank you, Ellen. Anybody else that wishes to comment? So I, we can't, we're not going to adopt this tonight anyhow. And I, I have serious questions about the eighteen inch diameter. I can tell you that.
I do too.
So, so I think that, I mean, our, our public has spoken. I mean, if there's anybody else that wants to give input, but I think the overall majority is that it should be twelve inches. I mean, I know you work a lot on it, but this is, this is our public speaking, so. This is a segment of our public. This is not the entire public of Sag Harbor. Uh, I just want to make that clear.
I can, I can agree with that.
I would, I would say that we need to at least reconsider.
I must admit, I like the idea of the identifying two groups of trees, that the invasive and the non-invasive, and coming up with a solution that would try and cover all of the requirements here, as many as possible. And, you know, you could have a twelve-inch and a fifteen-inch category depending on the species.
Also to check with your building department to see if that's something they can enforce.
Well, I don't think that we worked for the convenience of the building department.
No, no, I know.
I don't think that that's a criteria.
And we do have to think about administration of this.
No, no, I understand that. But I don't accept that we can't administer this because otherwise we might as well just, you know, fold our tent if this is going to be like a defining criteria for legislation. We have a responsibility to legislate and we have a responsibility then to create the environment where that legislation can be enforced. And we can't turn down the idea based on the fact that, well, I don't know how we're going to do this.
And there's also language in here about the applicant paying for a certified arborist to survey the property, uh, which is in here.
Yeah.
And regardless of size now, because maybe some big trees, a piece of junk, but the small one isn't. So, um,
And if you think about it, we really don't want to protect invasive at all. Invasive, we should be able to cut them down because we don't want invasive.
Well, are those trees listed?
We want native versus non-native.
I think this aspect of the legis, legislation needs to be more nuanced than it is currently. We have this very sort of black and white argument about eighteen inches, eight inches, twelve inches. I think we need to look at this and there's a little more detail to, a little more detail to be teased out. So I don't think this is ready for adoption, but I do think we made some progress tonight.
Just a second, please. Um, Liz, I also want to make sure that there's some language, I think in the revegetation session that didn't make it into this draft.
Oh, really? Okay.
It's there, but there's, there's, there's a phrase that we wanted to include that didn't make it in.
I'll, I'll make sure I check that. Deputy Mayor, can you please just say where that is?
I believe it's on page three, under revegetation, but we'll check and we'll recirculate. I think Jane wanted to say something else.
Okay.
Come on up, please, so that everybody can hear you.
Um, thank you. Um, originally, when we started on this um process some time ago, we worked very closely with Nelson Pope and Voorhees. And I'm, I think the village invested not only a lot of time, but a lot of money in getting them involved in this project. And we had much more nuanced lists and details, et cetera. And then as time went on, the, the law just became more and more streamlined so that we had a better chance of getting through. So what you're looking at is something that's good, but it's not where we started and it wasn't what we had hoped for in, in the early days.
I think throughout these processes, these proposals get distilled. Um, I think where we are right now compared to where we started the conversation this evening, um, I think we're a little further down the road in realizing that, as I said a little earlier, we just need something more nuanced and maybe that, I don't know, it was it, Anthony who made the, the suggestion of having sort of the list and, and size is not the only criteria that, that describes the, the value of a tree. And I think that's an important consideration. And so where these numbers end up at the end of the day, I think I'd like to see this sort of the, the, the list.
Thank you.
Any, any other public comments or does the board want to say anything else? Okay, so I believe we'll adjourn this until November.
Yep.
That'll bring us to a continued public hearing, resolution to adopt local law to amend, chapter two fifteen seasonal use dwelling unit registry to create rental permit registry for the village of Sag Harbor. I believe we're still working on this, aren't we? Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Anybody on Zoom? Do the trustees wish to comment, write anything to it?
I was told that East Hampton Town has a really good version of this law. I want to take a look at that, or I will.
I think
I think we used, that was a basis for what, that's where we started.
That's where it came from.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we spent this time listening more and more comments. I think we're getting to the point, we had some good comments at the last meeting.
Yep. Um, we're going to have to tie this up.
We're going to tie it up because it needs to be, we need to have it um on the books for the beginning of the year so it's there in time for the next season.
Yes.
So, so we're really, you know, if there's no more comments, could, maybe we have the final draft ready for next meeting.
Sure.
And hopefully we could adopt that.
That will give people time to adjust if they need to.
Right.
And then Liz, I'm going to make a request and Kate, going forward, that for these amendments, the local laws, we're, we're, we're publishing what we're required to file with the county, right? It'd be nice to see them in the context of the law that it's amended.
We're filing what we're, yeah, what we're amending with general code, just trying to keep it so that we're, but you want to see the entire text of the law?
It would be helpful.
I agree.
Addressing.
Yeah. It saves a lot of doing and throwing and trying to read things in context and I think that's, confuses people.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good try and figure that out and how we
So we'll, we'll adjourn this till November.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. So that brings us to a discussion item. We have Joan Butler, Helen Russo, who's here, and Friends of Haven Beach about the oyster reef.
Good evening and hey, my name is Joe Moller. I'm here in Sag Harbor, one six times a year. Thank you so much for the opportunity, this conference we did, um, to discuss our project. Um, I'm Joe Moller and this is Helen Russo. We are both um, members of Friends of Haven Beach, which is a small community-based organization dedicated to restoring the health of Haven Beach and our Sag Harbor waters. Haven's beach is the only local public beach that we have here in Sag Harbor. Increased bacterial counts as cited by water testing as well as the twenty twenty-one water quality report have made our local waters unsafe for swimming. Our local waters unsafe for swimming after stormwater surges. The Friends of Haven's Beach along with the support and guidance of the South Fork Sea Farmers. And the East Hampton Town Shellfish Hatchery would like to build an oyster restoration reef in Sag Harbor. With the intention of hopefully cleaning the water as well as creating a habitat for other species. Here to talk about oyster reefs is Bob Teeman, a retired head of education. Retired educator, and he's also the head of the education committee at the South Fork Sea Farmers. And John Marley Dunn, who's the director of the day management for East Hampton Town Shellfish Hatchery. So I'm going to turn the discussion over to them.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. The South Fork Sea Farmers have done one complete reef in Akavana Harbor in East Hampton. And we're in the process of waiting for the final okay for two additional reefs in Akavana Harbor. And that, that picture on the left gives you an idea of what a typical reef, man-made reef would look like in New York. Our mission is to educate and raise awareness of the importance of sustainable marine agriculture and inspire constructive action programs. This is one of those construction active programs, action programs. It's a, a long process. It's going to take, if, if approved locally, it's at least a year before we get through all the state paperwork. So it's, this is just. I think probably most people know that oysters really do a fantastic job of filtering all. Actually go quickly because I know everybody's coming. Each oyster, each adult oyster does about fifty gallons a day. And barley on a reef like the first one we did, how many tens of thousands of oysters?
About a hundred thousand oysters, kind of fifty.
So like making a, a debt. Even in Akavana Harbor, which is tiny. We're figuring at least four oyster reefs and that's in addition to the oyster gardening site we have, which also filters. This is the life cycle of an oyster. The interesting part about that is you look at the second class one where it says the spat. That in, in reality is about, you know, sand size?
Yeah, starting at a quarter of a millimeter. That's when they set and we call them spat or juvenile oysters.
So the oysters that we get in a restaurant, those at that stage, every oyster wants to stick to another oyster shell. That's how they create reefs. That's, that's when they're happy. But for commercial oysters that we eat, we have them attached to a little piece of, that we've crushed, kutch, they call it. So now you've got an oyster growing independently. And a lot of people think that that's normal. That's not, we did that. The normal way for oysters to grow is. Like this. This would be a chunk of an oyster reef. And they just keep growing on top of each other. Yeah. So it's basically just a small portion of the oyster reef. Last year, yeah, the last year. So what we do to create an oyster reef is at that stage when they're ready to set on a shell. Barley in big tanks out of Montor will take these bags of oyster shells and clam shells that we collect. Sink them in the tanks and then basically trick oysters into spawning by raising the temperature of the water. They spawn and we get all these hundreds and thousands of oysters stuck on those shells, you know, microscopic. And that's the beginning of our reef. That would be a typical reef and very similar to once we put in Akavana Harbor. New York State requires, they, they still call them pilot oyster reefs. They haven't totally committed to this, which is one of the few states in the North East that does not. But a pilot oyster reef has to be fifty square yards or less. So in general, this reef would be either fifty by one yard or twenty-five yards by two dots. That's, that's one configuration. Those are the bags we use. The, oh, we're doing the word the way it's written. We start with a layer of bags that is just blank shell, no spat on shell. And then the second layer would be spat on shell. And they would grow into oysters, mature oysters. The bags we use are actually biodegradable. We get them from the Netherlands, they're made. Their three D printers make them with potato starch. And they have about a two-year lifespan, it's all work. So in two years they'll be gone and everything goes well, we'll have an oyster reef that's all stuck together and it's working independently. One of the most important things is getting the right location and we would love to find a really good spot right on the jetty. There's like a net, a shelf coming out about probably about ten, twelve feet. Which we could nestle the reef right into that spot. And that is that spot. We also, with the harbor master, we went and visited the spot. He was one hundred percent on board.
Yeah.
Will be any problem with navigation, no problem with the boat moorings. And you know, it's going to be right tight to the jet.
And how is the reef, sorry. I was going to say, being that far out from Haven's Beach, how much is that going to impact? The water quality at Haven's Beach?
This one reef isn't going to. Have a significant impact on the whole thing. And even if we put it right next to where, where the beach, right? Every in, in going outgoing tide, you still have.
Right.
Changing, okay? This reef is a pilot. It's the beginning of a process. You, you need multiple reefs in, in all different places to start having a real impact on the water quality. And I don't have an idea like this is going to clean the water. This is not, this is the beginning of a process.
The hope is that they'll, as these oyster reefs, which is mature, they'll spawn and they'll have, will have more oysters setting. On the breakwater, which already occurs. I know from snorkeling, you know, back when we had scallops on the other side. From snorkeling on that other side, there is some natural recruitment, some natural oysters growing on that breakwater. So it's already a nice living shoreline. So this would hopefully enhance that.
What keeps the reef in place? Like if you get a storm or you get some inclement weather.
Just the weight of the bags.
Just the, they're not fixed to the bottom or anything?
We could, we could probably in the, in the, yeah, the D E C I G, we originally were going to fit stakes in. Figured that, you know, five, ten years they'd prodded away.
Yeah.
But it would keep everything steady. The state was like very upset about having stakes.
Okay.
And this being on the inside, it's, as you know.
So they're just there.
It's a lot more protected.
And we do tie the bags together with him, which also is vital for.
And as the, as the oysters grow, they kind of interlock like a puzzle almost.
Any particular reason why you chose this site versus other sites in the Sag Harbor bays?
Uh, we did a little tour of the bay and it seemed logical.
Can you give more flavor to that, more color?
It has a nice solid bottom, which we went all around the, the jetty. And this had just a, a nice solid shelf with not a lot of sediment on it, which you don't want them to get all soaked up.
We wanted to reduce, you know, the, the chances that people would swim into them because they're, as oysters grow, they're very sharp. You don't want people really swimming over them or walking on them. They can get caught easily. So this was kind of a happy medium between, you know, close to shore on the breakwater and all the way out.
And I know our master was very comfortable with where it was, knowing what the traffic flow is and thought it was a good spot.
What's the life cycle? Like when, if you put, when, install one of these reefs? Is it self-perpetuating and is there, or is?
The hope, the hope is it, like in, in Akavana, which again, tiny by comparison. If we get four reefs and the, uh, oyster gardening, there's five different sites that will spawn at about the same time. When the water temperature reaches, you know. So we're hoping that, that larvae soup brings enough volume to look at natural set on all those different sites. But you gotta realize the billions of larvae that they're going to release. The chant, the, the percentage that actually finds a shell and sets is probably one or two percent.
Right.
So, so you, you need a huge volume to get the, the kind of growth we're looking for.
How long does an oyster live for?
Yeah, so that's the other part of it is these, these oysters, so these are, these are, this is last year's mini oyster reef. So these oysters will live ten, twenty years. And then you can see that the whole lot, lot of other things that have already set. Slipper shell, blue muscle, jingle shell. So all that stuff is also setting, not to mention the stuff that we don't see, the, the grass shrimp, the other fin fish that are swimming around, creating that habitat. You know, we just had a big discussion about trees. So these are the trees of the, of the bay. They're filtering the water, they're providing the habitat, very analogous. And you know, one point I always like to make is that we plant trees and we don't necessarily measure the air quality. But we know that it's beneficial and the same goes for these guys. We know it's beneficial. It may not be highly measurable. But we know that it's a lot better than the barren bottom that's out there now.
And is there a downside with this? Is there something we should be aware of that? Is it just a win-win-win?
I, I, I always tell people the worst case scenario is if this doesn't work and all the oysters die and you have foul shells.
Yeah.
That's like the worst thing.
Which won't happen.
Right.
Yeah, so there is no, like, I.
Our waters are impaired, but there's still a lot of life out there. And whether, whether the, whether the oysters recruit on the reef or not, it's still going to create habitat. And there's going to be other things setting on it, growing.
What's their ideal temperature? Water temperature?
Oysters are really hardy. They can handle any temperature we can give them. Salinity is more of a concern, but even here it's not a concern. We are, our conditions here are really optimal. You know, twenty, twenty parts per thousand, give twenty to thirty parts per thousand. They don't, they don't succumb to temperature like the base gout does, you know, they can handle those high water temperatures. So they can handle those eighty, eighty-five degree waters that we get. And they survive well over the winter, even these, obviously out of the water. I took these out of the water at four o'clock this afternoon. I'll put them back in the water at eight o'clock tomorrow morning and they'll be fine. They're super hardy and.
I think I can hear them.
What, what about like monitoring and protecting, you know, the, when you first start out seeding?
What we, what we do with in Akavana, which I think we want to mirror here is we get the schools involved. In, uh, East Hampton High School, they have their science research program. We have now three different students who have interned with us and their projects have been oyster reef.
And what about Pearson? Have you reached out to them?
That's what.
Yeah, we, that would be very interesting.
I also, yeah, to add to your, I mean, what do you need from the village in order to?
We need the permits, approval.
You're the landowner.
You're the landowner. The state, that's first step. The state will even look at an application until we have your approval.
Right.
Okay. I just want to have a question for the Friends of Haven's Beach. Were you aware of the Back to the Bays organization? And that they're, they're looking to also plant eelgrass around Haven's Beach? That there's an event, there's an event that's, let me see, I have it on my phone here. October twenty-first at Haven's Beach. From ten to twelve, ten AM to twelve PM till noon, there's going to be a gathering there. And Back to the Bays will be there talking about eelgrass and planting eelgrass at Haven's Beach. What's that?
That's right, because we were talking about actually, because they complement each other, the eel, eelgrass and oysters really.
I also heard about, have you heard about this wigeon grass that's now starting to grow in the bays? Have you seen it?
Yeah, seen it in Hobb tree quite, a lot of, a lot of it.
It seems to be, yeah, flourishing, right, could be an alternative. That's a lot of it in the Chesapeake Bay, I believe. So it's good for crabs and other marine life.
They, they scalls.
Right.
Right, would be great.
Have you, have you started the process with the village to apply or? Have you started any?
Just speaking with the harbor master and then coming to you was the next step.
Yeah, that's how.
Well, I'm all for it, so.
Me too.
Apply, yeah, let's go. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that gets us to the action items. We have a resolution, October twenty twenty-three, to accept the resignation of our former, former code enforcement officer Keith Payne. And I would like to thank Keith for all his work that he's done in the village and wish him well in his retirement. Do I get a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Corr, so those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so carried. Again, moving on to resignation of Georgianne Oberlander, who's worked in the police station. Yeah, she's, she's retiring, excuse me, retiring. Who spent many years serving the police force. I need a motion to accept her retirement.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. We have October twenty twenty-three authorizing agreement with the trustees. Of the freeholders and commonality of the town of East Hampton.
This is that seventy-five hundred. What we do for the grant for water testing, the quality.
Okay.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Trustee Corr, seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so carried. Okay, resolution October twenty twenty-three, reappointing village registrar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Okay, resolution October twenty twenty-three for budget adjustment for Haven's Beach study.
I'd like to make that motion and.
This is what we discussed, right?
We discussed, um, this Haven's Beach study, this is to close a gap between funding we received from New York State. And the numbers were, the study itself is going to cost about eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We got sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollar commitment from state of New York. Sag Harbor Partnership committed two thousand five hundred dollars to the project. And left a funding gap of nine thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which we are now going to close that gap tonight. And I really thank the village, thank the board for doing this. This will get this project going on Haven's Beach and we see everything else that's planned for Haven's Beach. I think, and this is going to study the watershed and look at the dream and look at rebuilding Salt Marsh down there and look at. What the best way forward for Haven's is. So I'd like to make that motion if it's not too.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Corr, seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Next we have a resolution requesting an IMA be entered into between the village of Sag Harbor. The town of Southampton and the county of Suffolk for the management of Silly Farm as a passive park. And I believe our councilman Scavoni is here from Southampton. Can you want to come up and talk about this? Tommy John?
Certainly.
Welcome. Yes, welcome.
Mayor, members of the board, clerk, counsel, good to see you. First of all, I, I would like to thank you for passing resolution number three with the East Hampton Town trustees. And the Southampton Town Board has entered into an agreement with them for the same project and has been doing it for the past six years. You know, it's a combination of public and private funds that that woman, Mary Ann Eddy, puts together. And she does a fantastic job. This is item number six. As we've discussed, there's people in the community who are interested in doing something with the nine acres over at, at Silly's Farm. And the way the, the resolutions read as we acquire them with the county of Suffolk. Is that the town and the county have to enter an I, an I N A and then we bring our village into this. And this needs to be in place so that we can research what we, we want to do with this. And so this would be an important first step for us to work together to do something with Silly's Farm. It is all collectively with the village of Sag Harbor, Southampton Town and the county of Suffolk.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
So that gets us to October twenty twenty-three to hire counsel. Motion by Trustee Plum, seconded, seconded by Trustee Corr, so those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so carried. Resolution October twenty twenty-three to appoint members of the Sag Harbor Open Space Advisory Group. Did you want to comment on this?
I'll make a few comments and I'll bring to this board at a subsequent meeting in November. An outline of a charter as well for this board to look at and review and, and consider. We've had a number of conversations that have evolved in the meetings around the open spaces of the village of Sag Harbor. We've already gone through the process, let me back up and say. The members of this advisory group are Lieutenant Robert Drake. Myself, trustee. myself, trustee and Kane, Ed Hollander, Rory McAvoy, John Shaka, and Drew Harvey and Rachel D. Rachel D is the president of the Mash, Mash Ashamoot Park Board. We all know Lieutenant Drake. Drew Harvey is, is a young energetic community activist, um, who has made a proposal frankly on Silly Farm as well. Ed Hollander needs no introduction. Rory McAvoy is one of the owners of Kid Squid, former events coordinator for the Parks Department of New York City. And John Shaka is the head of the planning board. The concept is to reimagine how we're using our open spaces in the village to see if we can come up with integrated planning around that as well. And, um, we've compiled an inventory of all the open spaces. As I said, there are forty-nine throughout the village. Trying to learn what's the ownership structure for each of them, um, what are the restrictions on use of them? And how might we coordinate, um, a vision of them for the whole village? So, you know, we'll, we'll try to help coordinate on behalf of the village and make recommendations to the village for anything from, looking at environmental consultants to help us assess them. Conduct public forums to get input on the public and how to use these spaces. I mean, it's logical that some of the first ones we'll look at are places like Haven's Beach, which is a very large piece of property that's currently underutilized. I think you can all agree with that as well as Silly Farm. But we'll hopefully address many of the open spaces as well. And, and we'd want to coordinate them with even the open space that the village doesn't own, which is Nash Park. And so the Nash Park presidents agreed to participate on this board for just that reason as well. Like I said, like I said, like I said, we will come back to the board with a charter and we will regularly report out to the board on, on activities and recommendations for the board. As well as good authorization, I'm guessing, for some funding.
I'll move this. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I love the idea to finally get our hand on what is is.
You'd be surprised. You look at the map and you see all these green areas, like what's that, what is, yeah. Is it being, are they being used properly?
Yeah.
Or used at all?
Or used at all. Maybe they should just remain as they are.
Exactly.
Just let them be.
Right, yeah.
Okay, resolution, October twenty twenty-three, to appoint the village treasurer.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Trustee Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by.
Part-time.
Part-time, but I just want to say hallelujah to this. We've been looking for a treasurer for some time. Tim has done a great job transitioning for us and he will continue to support us during this transition period. The, the treasurer's name, Kate, is Charles.
Bruschi.
Say it again?
Bruschi.
Bruschi, um, very experienced finance, um, career, um, in the corporate sector and will bring that expertise to us on a part-time basis, um, to help us improve not only our current, um, budgeting, planning process, but help us with what we hope to accomplish going forward, which is capital planning and we haven't done before.
So we had that passed, right? Everybody in agreement?
We didn't take a vote.
Do we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That brings us to the next resolution, which is to appoint Timothy Bullock as consultant for accounting services. So he would be working with Charles.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Authorization to accept twenty twenty-three bank reconciliations and collateral reports for August of twenty twenty-three. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Corr, second? Seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Carrie Garapie, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance, requests authorization to hire the following E M T drivers at the rate of twenty-seven dollars per hour, effective immediately. Jake Crowley, Ryan F. Kleinkoff. Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Carrie Garapie, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps, requests authorization to add Kristen Pettigrew as an active probationary member and to be added to the insurance rolls. So we got a new member.
Great.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Heather Nardi of the Sag Harbor Elementary P T A requests permission for the annual Sag Harbor Elementary School Halloween Parade through the business district on Tuesday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, from one PM to three PM. I'll make the motion, seconded by Trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Kimberly Babore of Cornell Cooperative Extension Marine Program requests to have marine meadow eelgrass restoration workshop. This is what I was speaking about earlier.
Yep.
On Saturday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, from nine thirty AM to twelve thirty PM at Haven's Beach. Have a motion?
I'll move that.
Motion by Trustee Corr, second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That brings us to the bills. I'll take them all at once, which is warrant number eighteen for five hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars and nine cents. Warrant number nineteen, seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Warrant number twenty for thirty thousand, six hundred, sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Warrant number twenty-one for five hundred dollars and warrant number twenty-two for six hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents. So I have a motion. Pay the bills.
So moved.
Motion, Trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Corr, so those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. That brings us to a public comment session for fifteen minutes. Anybody like to speak on any topic? Okay, seeing as nobody wants to speak, that'll bring us to a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Okay, Tom, what costume were you gonna wear in the Halloween?